Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I would like to call this joint meeting to order, the Board of Governors and the Board of Education for the State of California. The first order of business is our roll call, and Jerry, please.
Here.
Here.
President.
Here.
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 I am the president of the California Community College Board of Governors, and my board knows I am suffering with a cold, which I feel is embarrassing because I'm a physician, but so be it. On behalf of the Board of Governors, it is with great pleasure that I welcome each member of the State Board of Education to the first joint meeting of the two boards to take place in recent times. We have talked about convening our two boards for a joint meeting for a number of years. I am delighted that we are gathered for this meeting today. I would also like to welcome our esteemed panelists and all our guests. Thank you all for joining us today. Our purpose in meeting today is to discuss issues of mutual interest to the K-12 system and the community colleges. We look forward to discussions that identify new and innovative methods for improving student success. This is tremendously, this is a tremendously important conversation to be having in California today. I believe members of both boards and our distinguished panelists will engage in discussions regarding creative strategies and programs to improve the education pipeline. I am looking forward to hearing what all of you have to say, I hope and expect to learn a great deal from you today. I now have the great pleasure of introducing Ted Mitchell, my counterpart, president of the State Board of Education. President Mitchell has a distinguished career as an education leader and has had a lifelong commitment to transforming the lives of children through quality education. He now continues that leadership commitment as president of the State Board of Education. Please join me in welcoming State Board of Education President Ted Mitchell.
On behalf of the California State Board of Education, I want to tell you what thrill it is to be here today and how exciting this day is. And Dr. Malumet, you and Chancellor Scott have been the driving forces in bringing these two boards together, and while it is certainly high time that we got together, it wouldn't have happened without your leadership. And so we're here together for what I hope will be the first of many occasions, both as committees of the whole and in smaller groups, to work together to address some of the pressing needs of California's youth as they move from kindergarten through into the higher education system. I think that it's been quite clear to the State Board of Education during our work that the linkage between the K-12 system and the community college system is one of the most vital, that the pathway from K-12 to community colleges is the pathway that is the broadest and the deepest in California. And our challenge, I think, and we'll begin to address that today, our challenge is to help students make the transitions, not just in an orderly way, but in an inspired and passionate way that takes advantage of the best that the K-12 system has had to offer them and provides them with the kinds of opportunities that the community college system is so rich in providing to our state and to our youth. Add to that the increasing commitment that you've made under Dr. Malumet's leadership in dealing with preparing an adult workforce for the K-12 education system, and I think you have two systems that are deeply and tightly linked at the head, and I see today as an opportunity to begin to make that connection at the heart as well. So, thank you so much for reaching out to us. Thank you so much for your hospitality. Thank you so much for helping us come together today for what I hope, again, is the beginning of a conversation. Speaking of conversations, some of the very best conversations that I've ever had about education in California began in Jack Scott's office. I was a constituent and a proud constituent in my time living in Pasadena, and came to regard Chancellor Scott as one of, if not the single most profound thinker about the scope of education in California. And when it came time for him to retire from his illustrious career as a legislator, leaving behind policies and opportunities that will continue to inform the state and its people for generations, it was probably the wisest move that this board could possibly have made to bring him in as chancellor. His leadership, not only the policy leadership that he provided the state, but his campus leadership at PCC provided him with, provide him with all of the tools to be able to move the community college system through this challenging time into the future, as I think really the most creative and energetic segment in California higher education today. So, it's a real privilege now to turn the program over to my friend and mentor, Jack Scott.
Well, that's a very warm and wonderful introduction. I'm a little bit like an older man once who received a warm introduction, and he hesitated for a minute, and he said, "Well, I don't deserve that, but I have arthritis, and I don't deserve that either."
But I do thank you for those very, very kind words.
I did form a wonderful relationship with Ted Mitchell. Occidental was just down the road where he served ably as its president, and I had known of him before as the dean of the Graduate School of Education over at UCLA, but I got to know him even better, and I often was able to go to the campus, and he and I exchanged some conversations and thoughtful moments together. And so, of course, I was very pleased to learn that he was the one who served as president of the Board of Education. This is really a historic meeting. You know, the community colleges and the public schools have a very symbiotic relationship. I remember in the opportunities I had as president of two community colleges, of working very closely, particularly with the high schools. We worked, for instance, on some outstanding programs involving, at that time we called it vocational education, now we call it career technical education. And in fact, we continue to have a symbiotic relationship. Over 60% of those individuals who leave the public schools in California come to the community college. So, it would be foolish for us not to form a very wonderful relationship between these two great institutions. Certainly, one of the things that was most learning, the most exciting learning experience that I had as a legislator was to find out so much more about the public school system. I was privileged to be the chair of the Senate Education Committee, and all the things that dealt with education came in front of that committee. So, I was a great learner and recognized the tremendous importance of the public schools. And I kept saying to people, "Education is not a cost, it's an investment." And I believe that very firmly, whether we're serving in the community colleges or we're serving in the K-12 system, that's a tremendous investment. We're faced with a lot of challenges in this difficult times. We all know the straitened conditions of our budget. It's not easy, but as someone as well said, a crisis is a terrible thing to waste. So, let's work together in this time of difficulty and think of ways in which we can be most productive in terms of our relationship together. Now, I think I was supposed to introduce Gino Flores. Since I hadn't met Gino before, I, he's not here.
He's not here.
Well, okay.
So, you can make up whatever you would like, I bet.
He's a wonderful man. He is the deputy superintendent. Superintendent O'Connell told me that he was scheduled to be in Long Beach today at the meeting of the Board of Trustees down there, the CSU Board of Trustees, so he wasn't able to be here today. And if Mr. Flores comes in, we'll give him the opportunity to say a word or two. But anyway, I'll simply turn the meeting back over to President Malumet, and we'll go from there.
We have a very full agenda, so we're going to try and keep on our schedule, and then we'll have time for all of us to get to know each other better in the evening hours. I'm delighted to introduce our first speaker, Mr. Hans Johnson. Mr. Johnson is the Director of Research at the Public Policy Institute of California. Mr. Johnson is a demographer whose research interests include international and domestic migration, population estimates, and projections in state and local demography. Before joining the Public Policy Institute of California, he was a senior demographer at the California Research Bureau, where he conducted research on population issues for the state legislature and the governor's office. He has also worked as a demographer for the California Department of Finance, specializing in population projections. He holds a PhD in demography from the University of California, Berkeley. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you to both boards for inviting me to be here today. With a PhD in demography from Berkeley, they don't tell you how to work with different versions of PowerPoint, so I'm not sure if we're going to be able to have the slides up on the screen. All of you have a copy of my PowerPoint presentation to begin with.
Oh, we covered the lens. That may be part of the problem.
Did you want to use this?
It may be a lens cap problem and not a PowerPoint problem.
No, we just, well, someone left.
Oh, no, someone moved.
Could someone come through here? There we are. Just take the lens cap off.
Yeah, we made it cover it.
Yeah.
It wouldn't shine in Scott's eyes.
I'll be moving over here.
Oh, that's not a bad thought.
So, I don't know. Isn't that good? Well, let me go ahead and repeat, and she pressed the button.
Maybe we'll take a few moments.
All right. Well, let me go ahead and start here.
Okay.
Here comes.
Well, one second. Mr. Flores has come in, so we wanted to give you a few minutes to make some introductory remarks, if you would like to. If not, that's okay.
Sorry to put you on the spot, just as you.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm Gino Flores, and as of July 1, I began serving as chief deputy superintendent of public instruction for State Superintendent Jack O'Connell. And I'm running to catch up to lots of various issues and things, and so I'm very excited here to represent the state superintendent and our K-12 schools in conjunction with these very important items that are coming before you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Okay, again, thank you for the opportunity to present some of the research we've been doing at the Public Policy Institute of California. For those of you who don't know, PPIC is a private, not-for-profit research institution. We're based in San Francisco, and it is our mission to study public policy issues that affect the lives of Californians. We began a series of projects a few years ago that we call California 2025, and just as the name suggests, that series of projects was intended to look at California's long-term future. What are some of the challenges and issues facing our state over the long run? And when we began that series of projects, we thought that what we would be talking about mostly were infrastructure issues, like transportation and water. And while certainly those are big issues facing the state, one area that stood out to us as perhaps the biggest challenge facing California's future economic prosperity is what we call the education skills gap. So, in this brief presentation, I'm going to describe this skills gap and then talk a little bit about ways that we might think of closing this skills gap. So first, exactly what do I mean when I say a skills gap? California's economy is increasingly demanding more highly educated workers, and I'll show you a little bit about that in a minute. Our population is changing in ways that suggest that we are not going to be able to meet that demand for highly educated workers unless we have changes in college going rates, college participation rates, and of course, college graduation rates. And so, we've done a bit of work at PPIC trying to answer the question, well, how can we close this gap? So, I'm going to touch on some of those topics in this presentation. So first, California's economy is demanding more highly educated workers. We have focused on people with a bachelor's degree or more, but much of what I present here, we could include people with associate's degrees and certainly career technical education will play a part in, I think, helping to close this workforce education skills gap. But first, in terms of the demand. California's economy, as the US economy, has for a long time been increasingly demanding more highly educated workers. This table shows you very simply the share of workers in California with a college degree. You see that it went up from 28% in 1990 to 34% in 2006. Our projection is that it will reach 41% of all jobs by 2025, so that's four out of 10 jobs. Remember, that means six out of 10 jobs won't require a bachelor's degree, but still, this is an ongoing trend, and we project a continued increase. Now, at the same time, there has been a dramatic increase in what we call the college wage premium. And this is the difference between what a college graduate with a bachelor's degree earns versus someone with a high school diploma only. And you see, there's a number of charts here for both men and women for California and the United States, but they're all pretty similar. So, if we focus on, for example, women in California, you'll see that in 1980, the average college-educated woman in California earned about 40% more than the average high school graduate female earned in our state. By 2006, that college wage premium had increased to almost 90%. That is, the college-educated woman is earning almost twice as much as someone with a high school degree. Many people, and economists, take this as a sign that we're already facing shortages of highly educated workers, as this college wage premium has gone up over time. Now, on the flip side, so that was kind of the economic demand, increasing demand and increasing pay for highly educated workers, we have a demographic shift that will, we project, constrain the supply of future college graduates in our workforce. Specifically, we have two primary phenomena that are occurring in California. These are occurring in the nation as well, but especially in California. We have the retirement of the large and relatively well-educated baby boom cohort, and then, secondly, we have a demographic shift in California towards groups that historically have had relatively low rates of college going and college graduation. So first of all, let me talk about the retirement of the baby boom. This slide shows you educational attainment, that is actually the percent of adults with a bachelor's degree by age group, so on the x-axis there, we have age group. And you'll see that in 2006, the group that was most likely to have graduated from college in California were actually people in their 50s, aged 55 to 59. This is actually a reversal of what had longstanding, been the longstanding historic trends in both California and the United States, which was that older residents of the country and California tended to have lower levels of education. And you see that in the 1990 line there, showing, for example, that only a little over 20% of 55 to 59-year-olds had a college degree in 1990. So, in the past, what we had was relatively less educated cohorts exiting the labor force and relatively better educated cohorts entering the labor force, and that led to overall improvements in educational attainment. Now, we face this tremendous challenge of the very, not just well-educated, but also numerous, baby boom cohort exiting the labor force, and they're being replaced by cohorts who have not, in California, achieved the same level of college completion as those older adults. Now, one reason for that is that we have had a demographic shift in our population. The right-hand side here shows you the share of Latinos among all working-age adults in California, and you see that by 2025, we project that that will reach almost 45% of all working-age adults in the state. And then on the left-hand side, I'm showing you the percent of Latinos compared to other adults in California who have at least a bachelor's degree. And you'll see two things. First, that the share of Latinos with bachelor's degree is substantially lower than for other adults. There is some good news here, and that is there have been notable increases. So, you'll see in 1980, only a little over 5% of Latinos in California had a bachelor's degree or more. By 2020, we're, actually, I should say 2025, we're projecting that that will increase to 15%. So, this is strong progress. And if we looked at this by generation, that is, the foreign-born compared to the children born here, you'd see the children born here do far better educationally than their parents. So, there is a lot of good news and a lot that we can build on, but still, it is not sufficient for the increasing demands of our economy. So, even when we look at the children born here in the US, college-going rates and college completion rates are still too low for what we project the economy will need. So, when we put these two things together, if current trends persist, we have 35% of adults would have a college degree by 2025 in California, but only 40, but more than that, 41% of jobs will require a college degree. In terms of numbers, this equates to a shortfall of 1 million college graduates in the state. So, that's what we mean at PPIC when we talk about the workforce skills, education skills gap, is this shortage. So then, the big question is, well, how can we close the gap? And of course, there are really only three ways. You can increase the number of college graduates. One is you can increase enrollment rates from high school directly into college. You can increase transfer rates from community colleges to four-year institutions, and you can increase graduation or persistence rates for those students who are already in the four-year colleges and universities. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on each one of these pathways. The major message I have for you here is that we have a lot of room for improvement in all of these pathways in California. Many people, I think, for good reasons, think California has the best system of public higher education in the country, and yet, by many measures, our public higher education system doesn't compare very favorably with those in other states. So, for example, if we look at the 20 most populated states in the United States, California ranks 18th out of 20 in terms of the percent of students that are going, high school students that are going directly to college. And this includes community colleges, by the way. So, if I excluded community colleges, we actually fall to 19th out of 20 when we look at just those who are going to four-year universities. Our transfer rates from community colleges are low. There's some debate about what's the best way to measure. The denominator there, the pool of students who are really interested and want to go on to four-year colleges and universities, but I think everybody agrees that they're lower than we would like them to be, and there's a lot of room there because the number of students, of course, in community colleges is so large that even small increases in transfer rates can make a big difference in terms of the number of students that are at our four-year universities. And then, particularly at CSU, and I should back up a little bit here, we focus in a lot of our work primarily on public institutions. Certainly, the privates play an important role, but in California, three out of every four bachelor's degrees in the state is awarded by a public institution. That's a ratio that has not changed for many years. And so, when we're talking about higher education and improving outcomes, we really need to be talking about the public system as well, and we're focusing on the public system in this work here at PPIC. When we do that, and we look at persistence or graduation rates of students at the four-year universities, we see that there is quite a bit of room for improvement at CSU to improve their graduation rates. Right now, it's about half. CSU has, in fact, recently initiated a new program to encourage and increase those completion rates, and in fact, their goals that they have set for themselves are very much in line with what we have said would be needed to help close the gap from this component of improving college outcomes. So, in our reports, as I said, I'm not going to go into detail on these scenarios, but we have three different scenarios for where we might be by 2025. The baseline scenario that you see here is actually the number of bachelor's degrees that would be awarded in California each year, slightly less than 200,000, if nothing changes. If we have college-going rates and completion and transfer rates that are similar to those that we've experienced, that we're experiencing right now. The moderate scenario closes about half the gap, and the ambitious scenario closes all of the gap. The ambitious scenario, we call ambitious because it would require changes in historical trends on each one of these pathways. That is, direct college going from high school, transfer from community colleges to the four-year universities, and then persistence and graduation. But I do think that there are ways that we could achieve it. We have other reports where we look at the components of the master plan and make recommendations about how the master plan should be modified or higher education policy in California should be modified to try to increase the number of college graduates that we're producing in our state. But I think that the reality is probably with good policy, with funding, and all the things that we don't seem to have right now in California, we could make a huge dent on closing this gap, and in fact, that the community colleges play a very, very important role. The longer we wait, the harder it's going to be to close this gap. And I think it's clear, and you'll hear from other people, I think, and it's one reason you are meeting together, and I think it's a great sign that you're meeting together, that the systems need to work together. There are certainly efforts already underway. As you know, a number of agreements between our higher education systems and our K-12 systems. Cal State's Early Assessment Program, for example, is just one of many ways that higher education is working with our secondary schools to improve college going. Then Senator Scott sponsored a bill that passed that focused on early college commitment programs, and there's some very promising information and data from what's happening there. So, I think there are clear ways that the components have worked together. I think they need to work together more. Certainly, people have talked about the need to align coursework between community colleges and the four-year universities, that is, and has been done in other states. And then finally, I would say we have to align our fiscal policies so that we reward the outcomes that we want, and those outcomes don't only include students in seats, although that's an important measure, but they also include students who finish their degrees, students who finish their certificates, students who go on and transfer. So, that ends my formal comments, and I'm not sure whether we'll take questions out or later.
We're going to do a little now.
Okay.
Are there any questions or comments from the board members? Member Baca?
Thank you for that information. I just want to get a clarification. You, if I, just see if I heard you correctly. Did you indicate that private versus public in terms of degree attainment has been steady for some time?
So, the share, let me say exactly what, the share of all bachelor's degrees in California that are awarded by public institutions is three out of four, and that has been stable for quite some time. Now, the fastest-growing segment of higher education in California is actually the private for-profits, but they are still a very small share of the total.
I see. But you see, do you see a trend there that?
You do see, you do see a trend. Because it's such a small increase and fairly recent, it's hard to know how far it's going to go, and the number of degrees that are awarded, bachelor's degrees that are awarded for, by private for-profits is far lower than their increase in enrollment. And what that means specifically is that their graduation rates are very low.
I had a question. When you write policymakers need to make strategic investments, when you talk to legislators, what do you hear? What kind of feedback?
I think there's a recognition that this, these are big issues, and these are important problems, and I think they're receptive to our concerns about California's long-term future, but I think they're trying to put out fires right now, and the downturn in the economy and the budget the way it is, I mean, you probably talk to legislators as much or more than I do, but I think that, you know, they have these, they have the immediacy of the budget on their plate right now, and these longer-term issues often take a backseat, which is one reason why PPIC is to legislators as much or more than I do, but I think that, you know, they have these, they have the immediacy of the budget on their plate right now, and these longer-term issues often take a backseat, which is one reason why PPIC is trying to provide this data and information to as many people as we can.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Let me, can I do the, member, I have your names, Member Bloom and Mr. Flores.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. I have two questions, and I think I'll ask you both of them and then let you respond to them. One is that I've been reading in the public media over the last month or so, a lot of articles that say, why are we heading into an era where we don't need college-educated people? That's, that's one question I'd like you to respond to or discuss. And the other is, is how does, in your research, how do the community colleges or even the CSU count the students who are here, like, for the summer and take a course or two courses, you know, to prepare them for, or to, you know, knock off a class or two before they go to another college back east or, you know, up north or wherever? I mean, how is that accounted for in the, in the statistics?
So on the first question, I get very frustrated when I've seen the same kind of media accounts that you have. It is true, in this downturn, that college graduates are facing a harder employment picture than they have faced for many decades. But if you look at the unemployment rate even now for college graduates compared to people with less education, it is far, far lower. And I didn't bring the exact numbers with me. I do have a slide on it, but if I remember correctly, comparing high school graduates with college graduates, right now, the unemployment rate for high school graduates, I think, is almost three times higher than it is, it's between two and three times higher than it is for, for college graduates. And college, the college graduate unemployment rate is well under 10%. It's closer to about 6% or 7%. So yes, that's bad. It's higher than it's been, but it's a lot better than overall. And even college graduates who are young, yes, again, you know, they're facing a difficult job market, but they're doing a lot better than high school graduates who are out there looking for jobs as young adults.
But that doesn't get out to the media.
So I think that's, I think that is partly because, well, anyway, there's all kinds of reasons the media might, might think that the college graduate story is interesting. Partly, it's the circle that they live in and what's happening with their kids, and I think that's partly what they're responding to. Our projections do assume that California and the nation's long-term economic, long-term economic past is a good predictor of the future. And there is a debate about whether we've had some sort of sea change now, and all bets are off. If that's the case, then we have much bigger problems than, than just this. And I think it's right to try to plan for an economically successful future that allows California students to thrive, and that's what we should be, that's what we should be hoping for and planning for. And I'm not an economic prognosticator in terms of, you know, thinking about whether this recession means the whole world has changed. I think probably not. My experience in the early 1990s recession was many of the same kinds of things that people were saying about California, and our state's ability to create jobs were being said then as are being said now. This is, of course, more severe. So I think I answered your question.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Mr. Flores?
Thank you. You didn't speak about capacity to educate the children or our young adults. Isn't one of your points that there are, the lack of space available in higher ed for educating students?
Yeah, so there's two parts of capacity. One is the physical capacity, you know, is there simply, are there enough buildings and classrooms? It has not been the case in the past that getting higher education bonds or school bonds as a part, that included funding for higher education, has been a big problem. And we do have a number of campuses that do have capacity, so campus by campus, there might be physical campus, capacity issues, but in general, that's not been the constraining issue for California. What has been the constraining issue are operating expenses, that is instructional expenses. And we have a lot of data in some of our other reports that show how the state has stepped back from its commitment to providing funding for instructional expenses, and increasingly higher and higher shares of those expenses, especially at UC and CSU, certainly much, to a much lesser extent, at the community colleges, are being provided by the students themselves. And we used to be probably the most affordable without, with maybe one or two exceptions, higher education systems in the country. When you looked at our CSU and UC fees, that's no longer the case.
I'm going to have Chancellor Scott make a comment, Board Member Jones, and Vice President Himmelstein, and then I think we'll wrap it up.
Well, one thing I wanted to say was that there is a piece of good news I wanted to share, because you said there are three things we need to do in order to increase bachelor's degree. One is increase transfers from community college. And we do have a bill, Senate Bill 1440, which will greatly, or to some degree, increase transfer, make it easier, and mean that people will graduate with fewer units, because it will guarantee that if you complete 60 units and have a transfer degree from every, every community college in our system, will now have a transfer degree, that you will have automatic junior standing in CSU. We think that will decrease the number of units, so we can do it with greater efficiency and would mean that we could educate about 44,000 more community college students and about 14,000 more CSU students at the same price. So that's one thing we're doing. And I think that those in the School Board of Education, maybe can address some issues that might increase the number of individuals leaving the K through 12 system and going to college, and I can't address that. One thing I would say, that we know that in the next 10 years in California, that there will be an increase of about 19% of those who have those mid-level skilled jobs, not high school diplomas, but the associate degree or certificate that we offer in a community college, that job situation looks pretty bright. But the terrible job situation is going to be those with only a high school diploma or less, because that's the low-skilled people, and they're going to grow in number, and there are going to be fewer jobs. And so at least, one statistic I read said the mid-level skilled jobs, we're talking about electricians, firefighters, nurses, things like that, will grow about 19% in the next decade.
I've changed my mind. I'm going to have Board Member Jones, Vice President Himmelstein, Board Member Arkatov, and Board Member Ramos, and then we'll end our discussion.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of quick questions, mainly out of curiosity. First of all, you talked about California ranks 18th out of 20 of the largest states. Have you studied how we rank relative to sort of like states, states that have the same demographics that we do and that sort of thing?
So the, the states that are below us are actually Texas and Washington. Texas has similar demographics. Washington does not. Washington's kind of very surprising in that. Other states that have very diverse populations, like New York, do very, very well compared to California. So there's a range.
And just the last two, I'm just interested, the basis of your data, that, for your projections in terms of the number of jobs that will require college degrees, I was kind of interested in that. And then finally, one of the things you addressed in terms of policy issues was policymakers needing to make strategic investments. If you'd talk about that a little bit more, exactly what you mean by that.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry, the first part of the question before the strategic investments was?
The first part was sort of the basis of your projection.
Okay, the economic demand forecast. So, so they are actually a continuation of past patterns, and specifically is what we did was we looked at industrial projections that are produced by a number of different organizations, including the state, and occupational projections that are, that are done. And then we said, well, if the educational attainment distribution of workers in those industries and occupations continues to change in the future, as it has in the past, what does that mean in terms of the demand for workers by educational attainment level? So that's, that's how we got to that number. And then in terms of policymakers need to make strategic investments, well, I'm glad that Dr. Scott mentioned SB 1440. PPIC is a private, not-for-profit, nonpartisan institute, so we do not and cannot endorse any legislation. But when I'm talking about strategic investments, I should also be talking about strategic policy. And that's a very good example of something that's relatively inexpensive, and therefore, we should probably call it a strategic policy rather than an investment, because it's not requiring a lot of money. When I talk about strategic investment, what I mean is that we might think about funding formulas for our higher education systems that include funding not only for the number of students that are enrolled, but also based on the number of students who complete a degree or a certificate. And some states have done that. We have not, but that is one way you might think of having a kind of strategic investment.
Yeah, one of the things that you say in here that the education segments must do is align fiscal policies, and that's a deep and treacherous subject here in Sacramento. What specifically are you talking about, without leading the witnesses, is it things like concurrent enrollment, or what, what are the couple specific things?
Well, so it's not just aligning fiscal policies, it's really aligning curriculum. It's, so aligning the systems so that a community college student who has completed all the requirements for an AA degree, for example, is in fact eligible to transfer to a CSU or ideally a UC. And Florida, for example, has common course numbers, something California has talked about, for their community colleges and their four-year public universities. There's a lot of pushback to those kinds of ways that you would coordinate to try to make the process more seamless of going from a community college to a four-year university. And Dr. Scott knows a lot about those, those issues, and so do many of you on the Board of Governors. Between K-12 and the higher ed systems, I think other people could speak better to some of the alignment issues there. But again, I would point to a couple of programs that I think are really good examples. The Early Assessment Program that the California State University System has shown, early indications are that it does make a difference, that when you tell students when they're a junior in high school that they would have to take remedial education in math or English at the CSU unless they improve their abilities. We do see that there have been students who respond to that and increase their abilities and do not need to take remedial education then. And then again, the early college commitment programs are another one that I think show a lot of promise. I think, I am very interested in doing a kind of rigorous analysis of some of those programs, but some of the summary statistics from them show that when you reach students early, in sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, and get them to be on board and informed, and their parents as well, about what it takes to go to college, it can make a big difference. And remember, this is in the context of a California population in which many of the parents don't speak English, or they themselves have not gone to college, in many cases, not finished high school, especially among the less skilled immigrant population. And so that expecting them to be able to navigate, you know, what the A through G course requirements are for their, for their child, I think is in fact an impediment, and those early college commitment programs are one way that the K-12 system with higher ed can try to affect that change in terms of the lack of information.
Board Member Arkatov?
Thank you. I'm sort of taking that when I'm listening to this presentation. My old friend Lance Zoumi and I used to serve on CPEC together, and we would look at these stats and say, what can the state government do that would really move playing field effectively and efficiently? And it's 10 years later, and those numbers, those trend lines really haven't changed very much at all. And I'm thinking, one thing has changed in 10 years is the effective use of technology and creative partnerships. And I know that Chancellor Scott and his always great leadership has done some interesting partnerships recently in terms of effectively leveraging the community colleges and working with private, for-profit, nonprofit sectors to make sure students who don't have resources get them in terms of course completion. But what are things that you see in terms of whether it's online courses, partnerships like the ones that Chancellor Scott has led, that we can actually impact changes, not in 10 years, and not just waiting for the demographics to change us, but us to change the demographics?
Right. So I have testified to the committee on the master plan and other places, that what I think California needs to do, first of all, and this sounds really basic, but first of all, with respect to what we want out of our higher education systems, is we need to set some goals, first of all. The master plan has goals. I've argued that they're outdated. I think pretty, I think, I've argued convincingly they're outdated, and they need to be updated. And that means establishing new targets that are 20 years down the road. And then you need to measure progress towards achieving those goals. So you should have annual information about whether you're on the right path or not. And that brings me to the third thing the state needs to do, which all of you know about, is we need to have a good longitudinal student data system so that we can evaluate what's happening with students across time and what works, so that we can figure out which policies are most efficient, the biggest bang for the lowest buck. And right now, we do not have that ability, partly, and in fact largely, because we don't have the kind of data systems we need to link students with policy interventions and their long-term outcomes.
And, thank you, and Member Ramos.
Thanks a lot. Actually, Scott Himmelstein asked the question that I wanted to ask, but I'm going to take advantage of my opportunity to ask a second question. What is the, what are the cost implications of addressing the needs the way that you would prescribe us doing that? And what would be the cost savings at the same time? What would be the net effect in terms of state budgeting in direct terms?
So we, so I'll tell you the general answer and then only half the specific answer. The general answer is that a more highly educated population will earn higher incomes, that will produce more tax revenues, and more highly educated populations require fewer social services. So that's kind of the, the big picture, and it's, again, the long history of economic success of the United States and of California has been, that it has been achieved through these improvements in educational attainment from one generation to the next. The specific cost side, we have tried to estimate in this, in this report, and we have focused only on instructional expenses. And to do everything that we propose in our scenarios would cost over, well, by 2025, cumulatively, it would cost about $16 billion in today's dollars. And then for each year between now and then, we're talking about a little over a billion. So we suggest moving there incrementally. So it's not a small price tag. That's for the instructional expenses. We're not assuming that there might be other economies of scale in terms of use of technology, online courses, and things like that. So the numbers are pretty hard to estimate, and quite honestly, they're a little fuzzy. The cost of not doing it, we haven't estimated, but many other people and researchers have looked at how much return the state gets for a dollar invested in education, and I have yet to see one of those studies that show that you don't get more, and in many cases, in many of those studies, many times more, down the road, returns in terms of tax revenues when you spend an extra dollar in education. The problem, of course, is the timing one. You need the dollars today, and to spend the dollars today for dollars tomorrow is one that policymakers have a hard time doing, especially in this environment.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We, I'm sorry, we had to cut it off because we're on a time schedule, but I'll turn the meeting over to President Mitchell.